Good evening and welcome. This is the City Council Special Meeting being held on Monday, May 7, 2020 at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone. This meeting this evening is being held entirely remotely. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to consider A B 7898 Tyler Technologies Contract Amendment, and then to recess into executive session to discuss pending or potential litigation. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to listen to the open portions of the meeting. However, the executive session portion of the meeting will be closed to the public. I'd like to take a roll call of the council members in attendance, and please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember G. Michelle.
Here.
Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Council President Hunt.
Here.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Thank you. That's all seven councilmembers.
Madam Mayor, we missed Councilmember Marx.
Okay.
Councilmember Marx, are you here?
Very much here.
Tilla, actually, my script has your name on it. I rushed through it, so my apologies. Councilmember Marx, thank you. All seven accounted for. So the action item we have this evening is A B 7898 Tyler Technologies Contract Amendment. This item was postponed from the May 4 City Council meeting. At the May 4 meeting, council had some questions on the Agenda Bill and postponed it till tonight's meeting. In response, staff has updated the Agenda Bill to provide additional information. And Finance Director Beth Goldberg is on hand to briefly go over the new material and answer any questions. Director Goldberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I needed to take my microphone off mute. So I'm hoping that if Tisha could put Exhibit D on the screen. And my thought for this evening was there were two questions that I understand for Monday evening. One is the end date of the contract. And I included in the Agenda Bill the page reference where that end date is. And then there were some questions over how the costs in the contract tied in with what we were assuming for the total cost of this. And the contract itself is, well, it's a contract amendment to our base Tyler contract. And the contract amendment, the costs within that are admittedly a little bit confusing. So what we did is we put together this Exhibit D. And Exhibit D goes sequentially through the contract amendment, the language which you'll see in Exhibit A, and it catalogs each of those cost categories. And so if you look at Exhibit D, there's a page reference column that ties to the various components within the contract. And then what we did is we apportioned it by year. So it's a little bit tricky doing this online without having a paper copy next to it because you kind of need to look at Exhibit A and Exhibit D next to each other. But the bottom line is that the contract amendment and the reimplementation work will cost the city just over $1 million, $1,054. And this represents about over $300,000 savings from what we had assumed in the 2020 adopted budget, as well as the 2020 through 2025 CIP. And I'm talking about both documents because the 2020 adopted budget included appropriation for the 2020 cost. And then the CIP acknowledged costs for 2021. We're now going to need a small amount in 2020. This is going to take a little bit longer than we originally anticipated, but a three-year duration for less overall money than what was assumed in the 2020 adopted budget and the 2020 through 2025 CIP. And I could stop there and see if there are any questions that I can answer.
Just a reminder, just a reminder to council, I'm going to have to get back to mute. Just a reminder to council members, if you'd like to ask a question, you need to do that on the conversation side. And I can see that Deputy Council President Ray has a question. Thank you.
Working on the mute button. This is really essentially the same question I had on Monday night. When I look at Exhibit A, which is the amendment itself, it includes a payment schedule for $399,725. That is the amount that we have in the Agenda Bill for 2020 and 2021 combined. I get that part. What I'm wondering is, are we just planning to do another amendment then that will address the payment plan for the balance? Or where is the balance addressed? Because I don't see how we could pay them more than the $399,725 based on this amendment.
The amendment is actually for $1,054.
Where would I find that? Can I keep looking for that?
Yeah, so it's not, it's not, there is not a single, the way Tyler writes this contract, there is not a single number. There are the various components. So if you look at Exhibit D, you will see the $399 pulled out at the lines, I'm sorry. I'm having to look at this separately. So if you look at Exhibit D, rows 1 through 8, you will see the $399 there. That is for what Tyler calls implementation service payments. In addition to that, there are other components of the reimplementation work that are documented later in Exhibit A and also here in Exhibit D. So you start to see those in Exhibit D catalogs from lines 11 down to lines 24. That's the Tyler Investment Summary quote. And then you have additional costs that, including like city project management costs and things of that nature. All of that totals, over the course of three years, $1,054. The budget has appropriated, and for that, you need to go to Exhibit C. If you look at Exhibit C, you'll see what is appropriated in each year. So in Exhibit C, the 2020 adopted budget appropriated $1,042 for this project. Based on the scope of work that is documented in Exhibit A, we are only going to need $621,000 of that in the initial year. We will then have an anticipated $389,000 worth of costs in 2021, which we'll need to get appropriation for as part of the 2021 budget process. Because remember, this is a multi-year capital project. And then in 2020, 2022, there will be an additional need for about $43,000. When you look at the $621,000 in 2020, the $389,000 need, I'm talking off of Exhibit C right now.
Where is Exhibit C?
It's right before Exhibit D. It was in the last page of the original packet and the second-to-last page of tonight's packet.
Got it.
So the only thing new in tonight's packet is Exhibit D. But Exhibit C breaks down the cost and summarizes the cost. And it was an attempt to bring some clarity to the admittedly confusing Tyler contract. But in response to your questions from Monday evening, we added Exhibit D that takes the components within the contract and catalogs those out. So if you look at the bottom line total of Exhibit D, it's the $1,054, which ties to the $1,054 in Exhibit C, which then compares the amounts by city budget year.
Yeah, I have no problem with the total dollar amount. I have no problem with the budget implications. I just can't figure out how you are going to justify paying Tyler Technologies beyond the end of 2021 with that amendment. Because I see a payment plan for $399,000, and I don't see anything beyond that. So I don't, I don't understand how you do that. So, you know, if you got that figured out, then I guess I'm okay. But this is, it is, it is incredibly confusing document.
Yeah, so you need to scroll, this contract speaks to more than $399,000. So the $399,000, and I'm going to have to scroll through this, so forgive me.
But Beth, the amendment doesn't speak to more than $399,000. The exhibits have a reference to things more than that. But if you look at the document called the amendment, the only dollar amount I see in there is $399,750. I mean, it's, that's the number. I mean, unless I'm missing, is there another number in the document that is the amendment that says something other than $399,725, sorry?
Yeah, so let me, I've got to scroll through this. Sorry, it's so clumsy. This is life in the time of remote working. And it's rather long.
Well, the amendment itself is rather short. It's three pages.
Yeah, the amendment itself is covered, so the way Tyler does this is they have the service component of it in those initial pages that you're looking at. And then if you scroll down, sorry, this is super clumsy.
I don't understand this. I mean, I just don't, I mean, are there no services beyond the first two years? Is that, is it all software after that?
It's an S A A S agreement after that. It's O and M after that. So we're, this is an amendment to the existing Tyler contract that the city signed in 2014. The amendment that is multiple pages in your packet, it's more than the three pages, covers the reimplementation work. It includes, it includes the $399 that you are talking about that appears on pages 7 of 91 and 8 of 91 in your packet. And then if you scroll through to pages, pages 12 of 91 through...
Yeah, there, okay. There are no, there are no references in the first three pages, which is the amendment itself, to any exhibit. So, I mean, I'm having structural problems. This isn't a content thing. I'm happy with the dollars. I'm happy with the services. I'm happy with the scope of work. But structurally, this amendment makes absolutely no sense to me. Absolutely no sense. I mean, I'm just putting it out there. You know, the amendment should say, you know, as defined in Exhibit, you know, A, B, C, or D, you know, it's got these other components, and it doesn't do that. So I'm just baffled at how this got passed legal review.
So it did go through legal review. And we can certainly go back to Tyler and ask them to rewrite the contract in a different manner. But it will lead to additional time before we can get started on this. So, but if that's the council's, if that's the council's preference, we can go back to Tyler and try and have them present this in a different, in a different way.
All right, I will yield the floor. Thank you for, thank you for that.
Okay, forgot the mute button. I have a couple more comments here. Let's start with Councilmember Goodman, followed by Council President Hunt.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I was looking on Amendment A and under, after the last, after now therefore, number one says, "The services set forth in the Investment Summary attached hereto as Exhibit 1 are hereby added to the agreement." So where is Exhibit 1? If you can help, if somebody can, oh, here it is. Exhibit 1, "The following Investment Summary," and then it goes down. And does the Investment Summary have some total up to? If the Investment Summary somehow totals the 1 point, whatever it is, $1 million, then those numbers would be incorporated in the amendment.
Yeah, that's, this is Beth. So, yes, so Exhibit 1 is displayed in Exhibit D as the next section of costs. So the first section, the $399, is shown in those first lines of Exhibit D. And then Exhibit D takes the costs that Councilmember Goodman just pointed out in Exhibit 1 and adds those in the sections, let me find the row reference, starting with row 10, row 10 through 24 of Exhibit D. And then rows 26 through 31, 30 include costs such as city project management costs and things of that nature. And that's how you get to the $1,054. So all of those components are documented and alluded to, except for, for example, city project management costs because that's not, that's not a part of this. It's documented within the contract that we are seeking, the contract amendment, that we are seeking council authorization to have the mayor sign.
Okay, I, there is a, the Exhibit 1 that I see is the one that's right after, there's one that's actually called Exhibit 1 Investment Summary that has eight pages. And I'm just trying to figure out if that, I realize that Exhibit D states everything in a different way. But if Exhibit 1, that's right after the amendment, includes everything that's in Exhibit D that you provided tonight, then I would think we're golden. But they don't look the same, and so I can't tell. Anyway, I'm going to go off here and do some calculations. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? This is Beth.
Yep, oh, to me?
Yeah, so when you say they don't look the same, meaning you're not seeing, they're not the same between Exhibit D and then the packet Exhibit A?
Yes, no, no. The amendment specifically refers to Exhibit 1. And if you go down to the end of Exhibit, the amendment, you see Exhibit 1 Investment Summary. So the amendment incorporates the Investment Summary, which is in Exhibit 1. So if Exhibit 1 is the same as Exhibit D, they're just differently presented, then we're golden. And that's where I see one of the numbers, 777187, but I don't see the 300 some number. Well, anyway, oh, wait.
Yeah, so can I take a stab at trying to explain it? So first of all, I think we were tripping over exhibit references. The Tyler Contract Amendment, which is Exhibit A in your packet, has also multiple exhibit references. And as I'm thinking about this now, or that we may be having confusion. So that might be adding to it. But the 777 that you're seeing in Tyler Exhibit 1 is spread across multiple years. And the 777 is including some components that are displayed in rows 11 through 24. So this is attempting to parse out the various items in different buckets.
Thank you.
I have a question from Council President Hunt.
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. I have a question, which I believe is for the clerks. So in our motion, the recommended motion, it refers specifically to Exhibit A. And there's a lot of discussion right now about the content in the other exhibits, which are, may or may not be linked to Exhibit A directly. And so I'm wondering if it would be better, and if it might address some of this, to refer to the Exhibit A as well as supporting documentation in the A B.
Council President Hunt, this is Tisha. And I might need best assistance with this. But my understanding is Exhibits B through D of the Agenda Bill are staff's materials that they've provided to you and developed for you to help support this recommendation. But the contract amendment that you'd be authorizing the mayor to enter into is comprised of Exhibit A in the Agenda Bill and all the exhibits to the contract, which are altogether Exhibit A in the Agenda Bill. So I believe the motion is worded correctly. I don't know if you have any differing opinions, Beth or Jim, but that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I am not seeing any other questions at this point in time. Just giving a few seconds back to see if there's anybody else who would like an additional clarification or has a question. Not seeing an indication of that. Is anybody prepared to make a motion? Council President Hunt.
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. I move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the contract with Tyler Technologies Exhibit A to A B 7898 for reimplementation services and software fees for the Munis Enterprise Resource Planning ERP solution during 2020, 2021, and 2022.
Is there a second? And I am looking on my list. If there is a second, please indicate in the conversation box. Councilmember G. Michelle is second, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So, um, it's, this is a tricky one because I support the amendment, but I do agree with Councilmember Ray that we should be able to, at the very least, open up the Agenda Bill and point to, it just needs to be clear. Unless I was trying to figure stuff out here and I missed the last clarity. So if, so I would be interested in knowing from the makers of the motion and the second, who and other council members, where the, where the clarity is. Because I have no doubt that this will eventually get approved. I don't, you know, I'd like to get going on this project, but I would like some clarity because, you know, we have to, we have to answer to the community. And I also want to, well, I don't have another comment right now. So I'm looking for others to tell me why it is they're comfortable and where the, how we connect the dots here. Thank you.
Thank you. So just a point of process, if I could get Councilmember G. Michelle to do a second in an audio format, that would be great.
Oh, I second.
Thank you. I do see that there are some additional council members that would like to comment. I am going to ask first if the city administrator could provide some additional information, and then we'll come back to comments. The Administrator Bob Kewitz?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to ask the city attorney also to chime in here. I think what we're doing, Mr. Haney, is authorizing the mayor to enter into an executed contract. We have presented the terms to the contract, perhaps not in the clearest of form, but I believe all the terms are present. If the mayor certifies to the council that she will ask the staff to prepare the document in a clearer form and that she will not sign it until it is presented to her in a clearer form, Mr. Haney, is the council's direction to do that contained in the motion currently?
I would say yes. The motion incorporates all of the exhibits, so I think that that would be clear. And I think the mayor could work within those exhibits to make the contract more clear.
And Madam Mayor, then, with the authorization by the council, you would not then, if you could stipulate to this, if you feel comfortable, that you would not sign the actual document until you are satisfied that the exhibits are prepared in a more clear and concise manner?
Absolutely. I think that's a completely reasonable request. Thank you very much for that. We'll go to Deputy Council President Ray, followed by Council President Hunt. Deputy Council President?
Thank you, this is Chris Ray. I believe fully this is something we need to do. I am completely comfortable with the cost of doing it. And I could get behind the notion if we could present the amendment in such a way that it is more readily understandable. So as long as that was in the offing, I could get behind this.
Council President Hunt.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think that this is something, the reimplementation of Munis is something that we absolutely need to do. We have spoken about this many times, about the reasons why we have to do it. But it's best practice to have this kind of financial system in place so we can get timely information about our financial position and get timely financial statements. And it's very important for our city. So that's the big picture of why I made the motion is because I think this is something we need to do. I agree with my fellow council members who have expressed a number of concerns about the way the document is laid out in our A B. I think it's particularly confusing because there's exhibit to an exhibit, and then there's exhibits to the A B, and they have the same sort of, you know, numbering, and it's very confusing. So I appreciate that the mayor will make that more straightforward. And otherwise, the reason I made the motion is because I strongly feel this is something we need to do so we are better able to document and get timely information about our financial statements. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I'm going to wait a few minutes to see, or a few seconds, to see if anybody else would like to comment on this before we move. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Goodman here. I appreciate the suggestion that this not be executed until it's made clear by the, it's clear to the mayor that it's clear. And then if that could be, I was going to say if that could be kept in some official, I guess we keep the official records. But I can support that. Thank you.
Council President Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wondered if there is some, if we, I think that the city attorney did say that it is possible to sort of incorporate it without directly referencing it in the motion. But I also wondered if it would be more straightforward to incorporate some reference to this in the motion, which I could then make as an amendment.
We will check into that. City Administrator Bob Kewitz, you want to make a comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I think it would be appropriate if the maker of the motion wished to amend the motion that the mayor would translate. that the mayor would, uh, transmit a copy of the executed agreement back to the council, uh, once it has been done, so that the loop has been closed. Uh, the original will be filed with the clerk, but then the council would see that the mayor has done that.
Um, I'm going to come back to Council President Hunt. Would that satisfy the request that you were just making, or the query that you had?
Yes, that would. Um, so I, um, so I'll, I'll check first with the clerk. Um, so the motion, I'm going to make a, um, an amendment, and so I, um, the amendment would be to add the following language, which is, uh, the mayor will transmit the executed contract to the council upon execution. Is that a sound motion?
Let's check with the city clerk. Um, the amendment would be to add and that the mayor will transmit the executed contract to the council. Uh, city clerk, can you give us a comment on that?
Yes, I have this, uh, motion written down, and if you're offering it as amendment, as an amendment, Council President Hunt, then we just need a second and can proceed to vote on the amendment.
Okay, um, I will, as Council President Hunt, I will move to add the following language, and that the mayor will transmit the execute, the executed contract to the council.
This is Chris Ray, I'll second the amendment.
Thank you, Deputy Counsel President Ray. Um, is there any discussion of the amendment? To get back down to the bottom. I'm not seeing any discussion. Um, the amendment is to add and, oh, sorry, I have a comment from Councilmember Goodman.
Uh, never mind, I meant for the initial motion after it's amended, sorry.
The motion? Fine. So the vote is on an amendment to the main motion, which would add, and the mayor will transmit the executed contract to the city council. All those in favor say aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I'll proceed to take a roll call vote.
Oh.
This is the clerk.
I still am not used to that. Thank you very much, city clerk. Uh, we'll be doing a roll call vote on the amendment. Thank you.
To the amendment, Councilmember De Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Marts?
Aye.
Council, sorry, Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, the amendment passes unanimously. Uh, the main motion, uh, Councilmember Goodman, you would like to make a comment on the main motion?
Yeah, I just, um, I just wanted to thank Director Goldberg, um, for her work on this, and, um, appreciate her coming back tonight, and realized that you didn't draft the contract, city didn't, and it's confusing, and we have a job to do too, but I just wanted to thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I see Deputy Counsel President Ray would like to make a comment.
I just wanted to, A, thank the finance team and everyone who was involved in the negotiations of this, but also for bringing it in under budget. This is, uh, in a time like this, um, bringing this contract in under budget is, um, super important. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other comments. I do have a question for the clerk. Uh, when I read the main motion for them to vote on it, do I add the amendment as I'm reading?
You can just read the motion and add as amended.
Okay, thank you. Still not seeing any additional comments, so I will assume we are ready to vote on the main motion, which is, uh, move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the contract amendment with Tyler Technologies, Exhibit A, the A, B, seventy-eight, ninety-eight, for reimplementation services and software fees for the Munis Enterprise Resource Planning solution during 2020, 2021, and 2022. Uh, and I'll turn it over to the clerk for a roll call, as amended. And I will turn it over to the clerk for a roll call vote.
Okay, Councilmember De Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Marts? Councilmember Marts, I heard an aye, is that correct?
Correct.
Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. Mayor, you're muted.
Now, nobody will hear my funny joke. Uh, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you for all your hard work. I have some homework that I need to do for the council. Um, we're going to move on now to the next item on our business, which will be an executive session. This is a closed session. Um, there will be an executive session this evening to discuss pending and potential litigation for RCW forty-two point three oh, point one, one oh, per N one, per N I. The item is expected to last two hours. Although no action will follow an open session, the current conference call will remain open. Members of the public are more than welcome to stay on the line until the council reconvenes the meeting following the executive session. And at that time, I will formally adjourn the meeting. Uh, we will now be recessing into executive session at six thirty-seven P.M. And council members, will you please exit this meeting and proceed to the separate site meeting? Thank you all.